Good morning. Thank you all for being here this morning. We're going to call this November 8th Call War Meeting to Order. We have a few presentations we're looking forward to this morning. We're going to start out with our elementary school principals to give us an update on some of the things going on academically in their schools. We'll go in order of seniority, by school, not by principal, not following any of that trail. So, Ms. Hall, Tate Elementary?
Good morning, Dr. Wilson, Mr. Young, Chairman of the Board, and Board members. It is my pleasure to come before you today to give you some data from Tate Elementary The first slide is a diagram comparing 2015 through 2018 milestones data. This chart was developed when I was an academic coach back in 2015, and all the schools, all the elementary schools used this. And it just, we started, like I said, 2015. And the chart shows the gradual growth of our distinguished learners and our proficient learners at Tate. And then it also shows that a decrease in our beginning and development in percentage. So if you notice, and I've got one for you here, I'm going to give one to Ms. Young And like I said, this is milestones data, starting in 2015. And if you notice, I'm going to look at ELA third grade. And in 2015, we had 21% proficient and distinguished, which is threes and fours. And then it slowly gets bigger and bigger. And then in 2019, we had 41%. And then down here, looking, I'm supposed to get down to fourth grade ELA, where we started at 26% in the threes and fours, and it moves up this year, 2019, to 53%. So that has been from 26 to 36, 41 to 40, and then to 53. So it's a gradual growth. And at the same time, if you want to look down at the beginning learner, which is the red, the far end on fourth grade there at the bottom, it's ELA, it has the fourth grade, and then there's ELA. We had in 2015, 39% who were at the beginning, level one, and it gradually goes to 22, 20, it went back up to 26, but then it's 17 for the year 2019. One thing I'd like to point out, you're comparing, when you look at, and you probably know this, but when you look at 2018 third grade ELA, where they had 34%, these are the same kids when you move down to fourth grade ELA, in the orange, proficient, with 53%. So I kind of just wanted to point that out, that that's... All right? On this one, you can compare apples, apples, and oranges, and apples. All right. From the, this next slide is from Georgia Portal. I pulled the CCR data from 2017 all the way to 2019. And as you can see, the 2017 chart, Tate CCRPI, when I came to Tate, was 61.9. Last, or 2018, we scored an 83.4 with a gain of 21.5 points. And then this past year, 2019, last year's students, we went up 1.9 points to 85.3. And again, this shows steady growth at Tate Elementary. We had a big change last year, where we gained 200 students about, and 13 new teachers. So I was kind of worried about this, but my teachers worked very hard, and I'm very proud of my teachers, and my staff, and my students for the gains. All right. Successes, increased in the percentage of students scoring in proficient. And I'm kind of going over the chart we just had. The learner and distinguished learners level is in Georgia milestones, third grade increased 7%. Fourth grade ELA, 13%. Fourth grade math, 14%. And then the steady growth, like we just saw, on the CCRPI, where we increased content mastery, eight points. Closing the gap, I was, I have to say worried about, it was 100 last year, and we maintained 100 this year. And then our reading readiness went up 0.7 points. And another success, I feel like, is we have a decrease in office referrals, 22%. So I wanted to put this in that slide. Areas to improve, we have increased number of students reading on grade level. That's something we need to improve. While we have made gains, we still have room to grow. My teachers are working very hard to ensure that all students are reading on grade level, and we know if this is achieved, that that will help them throughout their whole life. We also have an area where we feel like we need to improve progress process writing instruction. Our writing, I feel like, will improve as the reading improves. And I will show you on the next slide how we are addressing that. Place greater focus on teaching and the intent of standards. I have seen this within the last three years at Tate improve every year. The teachers' knowledge of the standards, I see them growing, they're getting deeper as they are focusing on the master of the content, not just the standard, and they're breaking down those standards. Collaborative planning in the PLCs, which I'll talk more about in just a second, is ensuring that all teachers are digging deeper. They're working together collaboratively to work on the standards. And last, on our area of improvement, is our area of social-emotional needs for our students. The social-emotional needs of our students are changing. The social-emotional needs of our students have changed a lot in the 28 years that I've been in education here in Pickett County. The prevalence of technology and the fast-paced world in which we live has likely added to these changes. Students need guidance in developing communication skills, relationship skills, and developing the ability to recognize their emotions, how to deal with their emotions, and the emotions of others, and how to deal with that appropriately. And our current improvement initiatives. One thing we're working on, as far as trying to help the students with reading, we are with growing readers. And as you're aware, we receive the Growing Readers Grant. And through this grant, we have incorporated a designated time for independent reading and individual conferencing. And the conferencing is done by the teacher, as they go over and listen to a child read and conference on what they seem to be struggling with. We are increasing classroom libraries to accommodate this initiative, because each child, as they do their independent read, needs about four or five in their bucket to read with. Something that's a little different this year is our push is focusing on instructional and independent reading levels for all students, where in the past, we tried, we focused a lot on instructional level. Now we are doing both instructional and independent level. The next initiative, or the improvement, current initiative, is our 45-minute instructional block that's dedicated to language arts, which is for just process writing. And the use of a program in our building, which is consistent, where they're starting in kindergarten, something we really haven't had, but we've got the same program going on throughout the school. It's not like kindergarten's doing writing to win, where another, at grade level, doing something different. We've got one program, and it's going to be consistent. The language in kindergarten, I had my kindergarten teachers come and say, I feel like this above them, they're talking about subject or predicates. We said, stick to it, because they're learning what they need to learn here, so that next year, it's just a building block, so that every year, it's going to be easier and more successful for the students. PLCs. Our ELA PC PLCs is focusing on growing readers and implementing the writing inside the classroom. Our math PLCs focusing on the collaborative unit planning, formative assessments, and data analysis. We have contracted services at Tate. We use contracted services and camp personnel to assist with small group remediation. Contracted services and camp push in during differentiation blocks to provide individual instruction. And we are very thoughtful, me, my academic coach, my AP, everybody works together, teachers. We're very thoughtful on where we place these teachers, because we want to make sure that they are working with the most needy students, where we have a need, not just putting them in there just to work, but they are in there to help students. And our last one here is all teachers being trained in mindset de-escalation and loving logic. During the 2017-18 school year, all staff members at Tate were trained in loving logic. And during that 2018-19 school year, all staff members were trained in mindset de-escalation. I think this has played a big role in our success of the decrease in our office referrals. Through this training, Tate teachers were, are equipped with the training and knowledge for mode choice and trust, avoid power struggles, seek proactive rather than reactive, and set everyone up for success. It's something that I'm doing, and I started it about a month ago, and I do it about every other week. I do every week a what's happening this week. And I send it up to the teachers. It's just pretty much telling them, we have a fact name here, this is going on here this day. And at the bottom, something I got from Ms. Sunita, is the 85 proven strategies that to connect with your classroom. So, I'd like to read one. This is one that we did last week. And I just asked the teachers to try this, you know, every day. Is this new, is the title. Make an effort to notice and comment about the changes in your students, new shoes, different hairstyle, cool piece of clothing, earrings, because this is building relationships. And that's what we've got to do with our students, is build relationships. And I want a couple of weeks ago, the teachers like this, I got feedback from the teachers, because I told them, I said, come tell me, you know, if this is what you see with this, what's going on. And this one's called, this is the smart strategy number three, smart, smart. It's a speak with kids in the hall, say hello, good morning, crack a joke. For some students, this may be the only time you have an interaction, they have a positive interaction. So I think it's important with my last initiative, with the mindset, I think the teachers have worked really hard to try to make and build these relationships, and they've done a good job. So in closing, I would like to say that it's an honor and privilege to be a principal of this county school district. I thank you for allowing me to be a Tate, a part of the Tate family, because I honestly tell you, I love my job, I love my staff, and I love my kids. So thank you. Any questions? I have a couple. Okay. Okay. I'm so excited about all these things you're doing. Do you have any books for the growing readers? Is there a need for more books? There is a need, and we are getting that through the Growing Readers Grant, some, but no, that is a need of ours. I'm working with Sunita, and we've got about $18,000 book through our Title I. And when you do your differentiation block, how do you build that into your schedule? Well, we have 135-minute block for reading, so we have three 45-minute blocks, and one of those is totally for differentiation. I've got a quick question. You know, what you discussed in the last workshop about maybe coding the school day of the elementary schools? How do you feel about that? I don't know, I'm torn, because I feel like the teachers need that time, or the kids actually need that time, to do what they need to do in order to get this reading up where we want it. We would make do, I mean, if that happened, we would make do, but I do feel, what would that affect as far, would we start at 8:30 and then be through at 2:00? Or would we change where we had more, just about the same amount of minutes? What would it pertain to?
It came in context of, because we have double route buses and things like that, in order to alleviate the amount of time that some of the teachers and students there at the elementary. It would necessitate that it would cut it and dismiss earlier in order for them to run those routes, and then come back and pick up the middle school and junior high, I mean, junior high and high school.
Okay. I do feel we run late, and I do, you know, for the students, when we have some still there at 4 o'clock, and they're there early in the morning by about 7:00. But I feel like the teachers would say, but I need, I need the time. I think that the hours that we have is what we need, and maybe we need to look at cutting it out early, but starting earlier too. I know that that may not be possible, though.
A lot of this transportation. I did see an interesting thing out of Washington, where there's a senator that is presenting a bill to extend the school day up till 6 o'clock to match almost the work days. And I mean, she had a lot of good reasons why she wanted to do that, but essentially, it would be the kids would be there in school from 8 o'clock to 6 o'clock. And so I can't wait to see the discussion on all that, but, well, she was approaching it from the standpoint that childcare and after-school childcare, and it doesn't match the work. And also, there were summer sessions that we wanted to have, and so, I mean, it was very interesting to read what she's presenting, but that would be a whole change of...
That would be, yeah.
The feedback that I've gotten has been more from the, I don't know about Donna, but the feedback's been more from teachers of the younger grades, the kindergarten and first graders, that they're so...
And I can see that.
Is there, I understand what they're saying, and I'm very sympathetic to that. I don't want little ones to be pushed too hard, but then I don't want to short-change their education either, it's really hard to decide.
And I think from what I heard, I don't know that it was the seat time that was the issue, but kind of like what we talked about, that we have to allow drop off at 7:00, I guess, is what we...
We do 7:15.
7:15. And then, you know, sometimes you're not getting picked up till 30, 45 minutes after, so it kind of builds in almost an hour to two hours extra they're at school, for the teachers and for the students. So I think that's probably because of the transportation issues really that you're forced to deal with right now.
Do you have any teachers who want to split a route?
And ride around those?
Still an option, though.
I haven't put it there. My teachers haven't really said anything to me about the hours or anything, or I know Dr. Wilson kind of mentioned us, but I haven't said anything to them, but I can, if you want me to say.
No, actually, the feedback I've gotten has only been from one, one school, so...
Of course, you're going to have those parents that need to drop off at 7:00, and won't be able to pick up until 5:30 or 6:00, just because of work.
Because of work.
You know, the other thing is, a lot of time, I mean, in after-school, they're playing and everything anyway, so some of the kids would go home and deny anybody play with it to what practice school.
Yeah, that's true, too.
And they don't have video games, so they don't actually...
They are actually playing, physically doing something.
Any more questions?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Ms. Howke, Hill City?
I guess it's still morning, my watch is charging. Thank you for letting me come and do the presentation for Hill City this morning. We are very excited about the CCRPI report for Hill City, but we're very excited about the teaching and learning that's going on at Hill City that made this score possible. So I made a copy here from the portal of our CCRPI. And you see, our content mastery has increased this time, it was actually an increase of 16.7 points. Last year was actually Hill City's lowest score that we'd had on the CCRPI in quite a while. And that actually came from the section here, the closing the gap section, where we lost lots of points last year. We only had 31 points there. And so we really started looking at, basically, it's your subgroups, are your subgroups meeting the targets? So we had to figure out what we're going to do about that, and we put a lot in place for that. And you see that we're up to, we have 100 there this year, up from a 31 last year, but we have more things in place for that this current year, so, you know, I'm excited about what's happening with our subgroups. So for academics, you see, math, obviously, is, well, it has been our priority area. ELA has been a priority area as far as the money spent, we've used most of our Title I funds, and we have increased the ELA. But you see, math had a huge increase. We have had a significant amount of professional learning from our academic coach and from outside consultants working with math. But the main thing that we did differently with math is we just increased the rigor in tier-one instruction. We went back to framework task, we purchased exemplars, we went back to exemplars. We have, we just really made sure that the rigor of the tier-one instruction was what the standard was actually asking for. In reading, we did not have a lot of PL, professional learning in reading, because we just continued to follow the bookworms program that we had had over the years, but we did add in, we used contracted services, we increased that. But we'll go over that a little bit more, as what we're now doing with reading this current year. So you see, we increased in every single area this year, except the only area we dropped, even including the surveys everywhere, we dropped in student attendance, and we dropped by 1.14 points. So, you know, that was something that, the only area. So when you look at this, the strengths, obviously, is math content mastery. We had high progress in ELA and math. Now, the progress, that is where students are looked at among their peers that scored similarly. You can either have low progress, typical progress, or high progress. And we scored very, you know, we did really well there, our students, even though they may not be, some of them might not be achieving as well as still lacking a level one, the progress that they are making, and I think that comes from a real strong tier-one instruction. And then, of course, closing the gaps, when we're looking at our subgroups, that's the SWD population, economically disadvantaged population, and the white population is the other subgroup that we have. And we've really targeted, probably the one that we have targeted and made the most changes over has been our students with disability population, and I'll talk about a little bit what we're doing with that this year. And then readiness. We increased in the readiness area, and that's made up of three components, and that's literacy, which basically just comes down to the lexile. Does the student score at that median lexile point in their stretch band? There was an increase in that. Like I said, student attendance, we dropped just a little bit, and then the beyond the core, where we have the full-time music and art that we're excited to have. So, looking at our three, let me go back for you, priority areas of focus. ELA, content mastery, that had to be our priority area of focus, even though that's where we put a lot of our Title I money, that's been our number one goal in school improvement plan for two or three years. We really had to dig into it and say, we have to do something different with our reading. So, and I'm going to talk about in just a second, what we are doing differently with our reading. We need a continued effort to meet ELA and math state targets in all subgroups. And the lexiles, if we're scoring at 50, right at 54% of our students scoring at their lexile, well, that's approximately half. So what are we doing with the other half? So those are our priority areas. Looking at our three-year ELA trend data, you can see for ELA, just looking down at the school average, we've done 37%. Now, this is just proficient and distinguished, 37%, 38%, 45%. So we had a great increase, but still, we're talking about less than half of our students are proficient. And that's why we have to do something about that. Now, we're above the state average, which we're very tickled with, but when you look, the state average is 43%. So what are we doing in ELA? Well, you know, our score increased in ELA from last year with some initiatives that we have been working on for the past two or three years. We've had a big pre-K, because, you know, Hill City, we have three Georgia pre-K classrooms, pre-K through second grade early literacy, that's where most of our Title I money has been spent over the years. Ms. Sunita started this, and I've continued it this year. We have a pre-K committee, a community, we meet with all the pre-K, well, all the pre-K that chose to participate with us, to where, what are you doing? What are you, what are you doing? This is what we're doing. What can we do to have kindergarten, no matter which school they go to, ready for, have those students ready for kindergarten when they get there? So I think there's like, almost if you want to call it vertical planning, between kindergarten and community pre-K businesses. We have at Hill City Community Storytime, to where one day a month, we open our media center to anyone in the community who wants to come and bring their small children, and those children always leave with a book. But what the teachers do, and Ms. Hardison, she is modeling for parents how to read a story to a book, or, I'm sorry, how to read a story to a child, where as educators, sometimes we just think people know how to do that. Well, they don't, and I don't, you know, I mean, there's nothing by, you know, ugly by that, it's just simply that some people, they, you know, they don't understand maybe some of the questions that they could be asking. Have the child, why do you think he did this? Or what do you think's going to happen next? So just modeling that to parents, plus it also gives the parents and the children just comfortable with the school. So you're building those relationships. So we've done that for the past two or three years. Also, something that's happened by fluke this year, but I think it's proving to be something that we want to continue, pre-K, they do not have a planning time. But the only time, you can only have one pre-K teacher in the room, is during nap time. Well, nap time just happened to align with kindergarten camp time this year, computer art, music, PE. So we're actually pulling our pre-K teachers in to collaboratively plan with our kindergarten teachers. So they are getting, it's pre-emergent readers, is what we're calling that time of student learning. So pre-K is actually working on strategies that for the past couple of years, kindergarten's been working on. So if these children come already with those pre-emergent skills, and then we're sharing that with other community pre-Ks, we're hoping that will make a huge difference, just having children ready for kindergarten for all of the schools in our community. Something else that we did big last year that I think had a huge impact on our scores, we started looking at grades. Grades can be very different, even within the same grade level. Grades can be very different, they can show different, you can have an A, or a B, or a C, depending on really what the teacher's taking for a grade. So we implemented last year to where every grade in the gradebook had to be tied to a standard of that grade level, and it had to be common among, not, you decide as teachers, you decide what you want to take for a grade, but if, you know, you need it in your gradebook, and you need it in your gradebook. So that way, one person or one child isn't getting all their grades just from a math fact fluency test, and another classroom, they're getting their grades from math exemplars, which are extremely high rigor. So, now, you can use a combination of both. So it was up to the teachers to plan how they wanted to grade, but an A in your room needed to equal an A in your room. So we had teachers talking about common assessments, and making sure that they are aligned to grade-level standards. We also have just a tremendous amount of PL with our academic coach, at a minimum of twice per month, usually it's every Tuesday. The grade levels meet with the academic coach. For, last year was a lot of math training, we might have, there's consultants coming in, like Ms. Bonnie Angel, I don't know if y'all, y'all know her, but we had lots of professional learning. And we use pushing camp teachers also. And the reason we have camp teachers, computer, music, art, PE teachers, now agriculture at Hill City, able to push in, is because we lost fifth grade. So that left a 45-minute chunk of time that these teachers had in their schedule, which has worked out wonderfully for our students, because now we have those teachers during that block of time, push in to classrooms. And we also use our kindergarten pair pros, when their children go to camp classes, computer art, music, PE, they push in to other priority grade levels, priority areas based on student performance. We look at the classrooms, who need some extra assistance, and we push the kindergarten pair pros into that room. So we really use our human resources, I think, very effectively, and we use them all day long. I mean, our teachers, they have their planning time, they have their lunch, they have, this is that, just that additional time that they have. But still, with all of that, we have less than 50% of our students meeting proficiency. So new for this year, we have redesigned our entire reading program. We are participating in the growing readers, as I know all the schools are, but we have also added guided reading and balanced literacy. Now, we have had in our school improvement plan, balanced literacy for about the last three years, but then it's like, well, what does balanced literacy really mean? What does it look like? And we started doing lots of research on it, the programs that yield the highest student achievement results. And we have, I feel like this is the first time in a few years that we have a true balanced literacy program. Now, anytime you start a new reading program, you're a little bit, you know, so I hope that I'm staying up here next year, but I think it is the best thing for our students. And we've also been, we have to talk about the focus on subgroups, we looked at special education this year, something that I was very, that I really wanted to have, and is very passionate about, is we have special education teachers who would go from fourth grade math to first grade English Language Arts, back to third grade. We redesigned the master schedule this year, to where, for the most part, our special education teachers that do co-taught or resource are pretty much aligned with a grade level. our special education teachers that do co-taught or resource are pretty much aligned with a grade level. And they have common planning with that grade level. So my fourth grade co-taught teacher, she has common planning with fourth grade teachers. They receive all of the professional learning that our content area teachers do. They receive all the same professional learning resources. So I think that will make a tremendous difference. When a special education teacher pushes in to co-teach or pulls a child out, they have had the professional learning that the classroom teacher has had. So what is balance, what is a balanced reading program? You have five daily components. We have introduced phonemic awareness and phonics. This is, it looks like, it sounds sensible for the first 40 days in kindergarten. It's just building that phonemic awareness that we've kind of fallen behind with for the past several years. A lot of it is just the sounds, it's nursery rhymes, it's things that a lot of children, just, they don't get. So this is a 40-day program that goes through sound sensible. We also use that in first grade intervention. We have actually brought back Saxon Phonics. It's an old program, and when you look at it, you think, oh my, you know, here we go back. But it is a true wonderful phonetic program. It teaches phonics. And when you have all the other parts of reading, it fills a gap for lots of children. And then you just have spiral reviews up in the upper grades. Guided reading, it flows beautifully with our growing readers. It's basically where every child receives individualized instruction on their reading level. If you're, we use Fontes and Vanel. If you're in a level C and you're learning main idea, you're in a small group with your teacher, this is the intervention time, you are learning it on your level of book. If you're talking about main idea in a level C book, or let's say you're reading a level P book, will you get main idea taught to you out of a level P book? So everything is exactly where the child is supposed to be. Then we have independent reading, even in kindergarten. Students by the end of the year are expected to be reading 12 to 15 books per week with teacher conferencing. Now, this is not, you know, you'd like Dear Time, I'm familiar with the old Dear Time. You go read, I'm going to sit over here and read. You know, children are reading, and teachers are conferencing. And it goes back even to some of the old running records days. And then we have writing, whatever skill you've taught in, oh, ask it to read aloud. If you have read aloud, and that's on or above grade-level text. Whatever skill you're teaching in your independent, or in your guided reading, you model that in the read aloud, you conference with it in independent reading, and also, that is your priority skill in writing. Math. You can see our three-year trend here in math. We had the largest improvement this year. So we're at 68% proficient above the state average. Looking at our current math initiatives, just maintain the pre-K through fourth grade parent engagement. We do a lot with parent engagement. The pre-K meetings, nuercy project, which is gloss, Hill City still uses gloss. That's something we did countywide a few years ago. But we have stuck with that in kindergarten. Make sure your standards are aligned to your common grading practices. We still use contracted services and PLCs with academic coaches. And then, most importantly, is we celebrate student growth. We celebrate student growth, we celebrate staff accomplishments. So those are our current initiatives that we will just keep moving right along with for math. ELA is our area that most of the new changes will take place in. And then, in the email that Dr. Wilson had sent us out, so that we're talking about current realities. So these are some things I wanted to touch on. First of all, we are wading through the growing readers program for books. We're not getting quite as many as we first thought we were getting. We were thought we were getting complete classroom sets of books. We're only getting 100 books per classroom. Well, when you're looking at a child refreshes their bag of five to six books in their little kit about every two weeks, well, 100 books will last you about a couple, you know, when you've got a classroom of 20, you've got, you know, a month or so worth of books in there. So this information came along after we had budgeted. So we have made lots of copies, because we also have copies from using our guided reading. Like if you have kids on level C, well, you need six approximately, level C little readers. Well, we're making copies right now. And I, I mean, we, you know, we budget for books and periodicals, but this is an unexpected expenditure. So you know, we may need some additional instructional funds, you know, for books for our guided reading and growing readers program. We are getting some, but not near as many as we've, and we have purchased some. I mean, we've purchased quite a few, but we still need many, many more books. Something that I wanted to bring up as far as where we are. We are so appreciative for that floating pair pro that the board and Dr. Wilson allowed us to get last year. We don't use her for clerical, we don't use her filing papers, writing papers. We use her for instruction. Now, she does do some lunch duty for us. But other than that, we use her for some small group instruction. She pulls children all day long. I think, and I've looked about this with my Title I money, but I'm, for the years, I have used contracted services and parent engagement money just to buy other little kids. And we use an iRee program, so that's how it's been my Title I money. But I think if we have first grade pair pros, that would make a tremendous amount of difference in our student achievement. I really, she works with instruction. She's not there filing papers, she's not there making the teachers' life easier. She is there to work with a little sound sensible group. All the others are working on guided reading. So I think that would be a big step for us. And then, as, also as Ms. Hall mentioned, I think just simply the social, emotional needs of our students. It's very different. This is my 27th year, and things change, I mean, we know things change. But children are, they're in crisis. So many of our children are incomplete, they have, they have a hard time. We have a school counselor, and she is absolutely wonderful. Hill City's been very fortunate to have great school counselors over the years. But our children, I think, are in a place where they need regular ed and special ed, where they need more than probably what a school counselor at this point. You know, maybe an in-school behavioral specialist or a trauma counselor, not just to serve special education, not to serve just regular education, just on a moment's notice. We have children that you may not have ever had an issue with, but something's happened in their life, that someone has just gotten cancer, or someone has just passed away, or someone was just, you know, something has happened, and their parents are incarcerated, or their parents have just gotten out, and their little worlds are in crisis. So I think we're to the point that we need something like that. And that would gain back academic time. Because right now, the school counselor, teachers, admin, I mean, we work with that. And we love those children, and we want to give them the best. But we also need to preserve academic time while we're dealing with that. So that's my presentation. And questions?
Do you feel that you need a full-time person to meet these needs? Or could you share?
I think probably each, I think each school could use a full-time person, I do. We would be very, very thankful for any, for any help that we could get. And I know we do have a behavioral specialist in our county, and of course, he serves all schools. So sometimes when it is a child that you are looking at with an ongoing situation, you know, you scheduled him to come over, and he's good, but sometimes you have to wait. Because he serves all children. We have children who, that are chronic. And then you have children who, you know, just for a week, they may have, they may be in crisis for a week or two. And then you have children who stay in crisis. And, you know, it can be very, it's disruptive to that child's education, and it's disruptive to the other children's education. And, you know, I just think if we could get someone there to help, to help those children and address the root cause of the problem.
Well, to steal a term from, I'm sure y'all have heard of Joe Hendershaw, to steal a term from him, of wounded students, that all of you are elementary, and y'all fully understand these wounds start, and it started for many of them before they ever come to you. And I feel like if we don't address those wounds, I know that, you know, we're, whether we want to be or not, we are a social organization. And if we don't address those wounds early, then they just grow and exacerbate as they get older. And then you start having some serious, serious depression, suicide, anxiety. So it is, it's truly a really issue. A question I have, Jennifer, for all three of you. I'm assuming all of you are experiencing the same need for A to Z books?
Yes.
Because I have had lots of teachers call me concerned that they're having to make copies. And that's a major concern for me. Because I know that, you know, if I got to read a really nice colored book, or I had to look up something off the duplicate machine, I don't know that that would terribly engage me. So I don't know if there are other kinds available, Dr. Wilson, that we could look at that could help them. But I feel like that's really.
Absolutely. I mean, I've always told the staff, told the teachers, if they need it, come see me.
And that's what you always did at Hill City?
And this is, this is new.
Haven't known it.
Yeah, this has just come up from the growing readers this year. And like I said, we're not getting near the books that we thought we were getting with growing readers. So that's where, and we've purchased a lot of books at Hill City, we really have. I've used most of my budget for books and periodicals already. But like I said, this is, and Dr. Wilson has been very good to ask us, what do you need? You know, what do you need? Teachers, you know, at Hill City, they won't very much come even tell you what they need. And we are, like I said, we are, we're making copies, we're making lots of copies right now. We have books ordered, we've received lots of books. And growing readers, we got an email from Ms. Cobb, what, last week, that the growing readers books have been ordered now. But it's still not going to be enough. It will not be enough.
Yeah, y'all need to get together and get, give me a list of what it is you need. And then we'll make sure it happens.
And I will, for, I think is, I personally, you know, just one person, I think that if there are people that are qualified, I think for additional pair pros, I think that is a very valid issue and concern. I also think it's a great way how we grow teachers in this county. Because I know many times, y'all hire folks that can't get a teaching job. So truly, you know, for very little outlay, you're actually getting a second teacher in the room. Now, of course, I think through first grade is great. For me personally, I would like to see pair pros up through second grade at least. That's just my personal opinion, so, yeah. Because I just know how teachers need this support. And, you know, any support we can give this year, and I think it's just imperative.
Okay, I'm going to ask you the same question. What do you think about shortening school days for elementary? Oh goodness, I'm very, I'm very torn, very torn. Because I know that anytime you talk about shortening time, teachers have quite a fit. Because they feel like they don't have time right now to teach what they need to teach. I think we go a very long day from the 7:15 drop-off to, my last bus comes about 4:15. 4:20, about the time they get on the bus and, you know, get loaded. We adjust the teacher's schedule for that, so she's not working over her time. We have some children that get there at 7:15, and are picked up at 6:00. Which no matter how you adjust time, that's still going to happen. You're going to have some children that are dropped off for before-school care and stay till the end of the day in after-school care. Our young ones, by 2 o'clock, whether the school day schedule says we're finished or not, they're finished. You know, they're, even though, you know, we know we still, so we schedule recess at the end of the day. We schedule, you know, we try to, but you know, everybody can't have recess at the same time. It's hard, I don't know. I, I know it's a long day, and I hear that from parents. I hear that, you know, when kids, something we do hear is they have their child's, you know, doctor appointments, where they don't take appointments after 4:00. Well, they come and check them out, which I mean, I know y'all have heard that. I mean, that's something I hear a good bit. Teachers, oftentimes, they do need to leave a little bit early to get their child to the doc, which I know you would have that anywhere, whichever grade level you're doing that. I, it's a long day. But, you know, I don't know. I know teachers, they scream if they lose time, but then at the same time, you hear, it's a long day.
So you're saying we can't win.
I had a few quick, I guess for all three of you, building off of that, so that is something Dr. Wilson and I had talked about when this first came up. How do y'all assign, I guess, duties as far as to the teachers? Are they all expected to arrive at 7:15 and not leave till the bus leaves? Or do y'all break it up?
Break it up. My staff really is 7:45, and they don't have a morning duty. And one day a week, they have an afternoon bus duty, but they're through about 3:45. And they adjust their time if they have that. We don't get kids, we actually hold our kids in our auditorium till 8:10 or 8:15 for kindergarten and first grade. So therefore, in the morning, they have a planning time from 7:45 till about 8:15. So they can come in, if they have to stay in the auditorium, if they have that one-day bus duty, they can stay in the auditorium. They don't have to come in till 8 o'clock, and then they could be through at 4:00. They seem okay with that. I haven't, I haven't had any teachers, you know, comment with me, but.
One thing that we have done differently last year and this year. We used to hold our students in the lunchroom until, you know, 5, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, for they truly had to be in the classroom. Well, at teacher's request, we started at 7:15, or, I'm sorry, 7:55, when we opened the doors for drop-off for everyone, they go straight to the teacher's classroom. They wanted that because they wanted to go ahead and be able to do some small groups, or do some interventions, or get the kids in books versus sitting in the lunchroom, being all handsy with each other. So our teacher's time, it's adjusted. Like the person who stays for that 4:15, 4:20 bus, she doesn't come in until, you know, 8:00. And it's one of my camp teachers, so you know, she does, I have a home room. It's not like we're, you know, having to put children somewhere else. We've adjusted pair pro schedules to come in a little bit later to help cover some of the afternoon car rider. So we have people working on different schedules. One of the hard things, I think, for our teachers this year. Now, they're not over their time, because they know they can adjust their, you know, their schedule. They come in at 7:55, but they come in at 7:55, children come in at 7:55. Our buses come at 3:45. By the time they're on their bus and pulling out, it's 3:50. Well, teachers leave, then, their day, they don't leave, but their day ends at 3:55. So that used to, that built-in, I think, just that built-in actual, that extra time, they don't have that. As soon as when children get there for the regular time, now, not morning care, but when they get there for the regular time, children come to the room. They put them on the bus, and it's time for teachers then to clock out. So you don't have that extra 10, 15, 20 minutes. But now, it was the teachers who wanted them to come to the room early in the morning.
How about Harmony?
It's the same, it's similar to Jennifer, it's 7:55.
So I guess, the students do potentially have a long day, but the teachers actually, they're basically staying there, what would be normally expected.
Yes. A few times, like they, you know, if they clock in at 7:45, you know, they may be leaving, you know, from the buses at 3:48. You know, I mean, it's close, it's really close. But teachers know they don't have to be there till 7:55, but now that's what time children are coming also. So, you know, teachers walk in, kind of, but they get there early, and they stay late. I mean, that honestly, that's what happens. But they don't have to. I mean, by me, I'm not saying you have to. It's by what, how they choose to, what they have, you know, just what they feel they need to do.
And another quick question for all three of you on a different subject. I know, I guess, incentive-type readings, I know used to, if there was AR or Patchad or this or that, is there any programs like that being used?
We have AR.
Y'all still have it?
We do, we have AR. And we have the Super Principals Challenge, that I'm sure we'll do again this year. That lovely video of all of us in our row race.
I was just curious about that.
I've got a question, if it's okay, to all three of you. And y'all may kill me for asking this, because this is kind of off the wall, and something I just came up with in the middle of the night. But looking at school calendars, and, you know, we had the nine-day pre-plan, which, you know, I've got my opinion of that. But, you know, I was looking at one of the school calendars, and if we could trim two in-service days off, but, you know, still get that in 190 days. And I know at the schools that have the athletics, that would be easy to pick up duty time. Would it be easy for you to have 16 hours of PTO, movie nights, that kind of thing? Could you document 16 hours that your teachers work outside of the school day to make up for those two days?
Yes, absolutely. Any faculty, we could do that, yeah, in a couple of months. Any faculty meeting, leadership meeting, anything we have, like, every time we have something like that, teachers have to. something like that, teachers have to come in 45 minutes early or stay 40 minutes past their time. Because like I said, from the time the children get there to the time the children leave, there with the children. So any meetings, anything we have is additional time for teachers.
And I've got 30 years' experience in the extra time, but I just want to make sure that that would be something we could easily document on the elementary level, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Question? And it would be easy if we don't have eclipse hurricanes.
Well, I'm just trying to...
Only one.
Right, right. But I'm just trying to...
No, it could.
To back my picture and handle it, you know?
Yes. Exactly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Callahan?
Hi. Thank you.
Yeah, you can just say what they said.
I know, that's what I'm doing. I'm finished. I'm going to go ahead and hand this to you guys. This is one of the slides that I'm going to go and give back to you for. And I am going to say, there's going to be a lot of things that are repeated because we are all doing kind of some similar things district-wide. I want to say good morning. I would like to thank the board members, along with Dr. Wilson and Mr. Young, for giving us this opportunity to discuss our schools with you. By giving each school time to present, it shows the importance and priorities that each one of you give each one of our buildings, and that's important for us to see. We at Harmony have worked very diligently to provide our students with a rigorous academic environment that meets the needs of our students and continually work to meet ever-changing emotional and social needs of our students. One of the ways we begin each day is with our school motto, 2019-20, we talk about being a team and a family and about being strong for each other. Each morning on the announcements, I say, "Okay Eagles, we're going to be strong for each other. I am strong if you are strong. Are you strong?" And that children and staff stay together. I am strong, Harmony is strong. This begins our day with a focus and purpose. We share with you this so you can get a little glimpse of our culture before we discuss our student achievement. I'd like to begin the presentation with our success in the previous years. At Harmony, the school climate has been on a positive trajectory, and we feel it's only going to go up from here. We've received a four-star rating out of five for the last two years on our CCRPI score. Within that star climate component, there's an overall 90% or higher parent and staff satisfaction rating. We have been on the forefront implementing personalized learning in math and raised through third and fourth. By customizing this learning to our students, they are given exactly what they need when they need it to be successful. This, we believe, has contributed to our continued growth and achievement in math. We also utilize three contract service providers for around 20 to 25 hours per week from each person, from each person to work with our small groups of students first through fourth grade in previous years. They work specifically with students who have been identified as struggling in ELA in math, and the tutors all have a background in education holds as type of certification. And this is our present reality. This slide shows our present reality coming into the 2019-20 school year. We've had several changes in the last two years. One of the changes was our student population at Harmony. We are now the elementary school that provides targeted support for the English learner population. We went from three EL students to three in one year. Thankfully, we've been provided an ESOL teacher to help with these students and for them to be successful. Our building-level leadership also has been in flux. We've had an entirely new leadership team in our school, including principal, assistant principal, academic coach, and counselor. And also, our fifth-grade students, who at one time contributed to our CCRPI growth score, are now at JMS. You can see our CCRPI scores listed here for the last three years. It increased and then, of course, decreased last year. We don't believe this number tells us the whole picture of Harmony. When reviewing the components of CCRPI, content mastery, progress, closing the gaps and readiness, and school climate, we demonstrated high achievement but low growth last year. Within the closing the gap component, the, our growth is measured by the only group of students who moves from third to fourth grade, so that's our growth score there. Then we are measured against a high target or baseline that was set in previous years. For example, when looking at ELA for all students under the closing the gap section of CCRPI, our target was 58.68. We scored a 57.17. So basically, a little over a point and a half away from the target kept us from meeting that goal. This is the sheet that I've handed to you. Instead of focusing, and this is the one that Ms. Hall was talking about, that all the schools have together. Instead of focusing on one number, like the final CCRPI score, we've broken it down and compared assessment scores for the last five years to get a better understanding of our Georgia milestones. We've chosen to focus on the whole picture of our scores since 2015 to get an accurate measurement. Students can score one, Level 1 beginning, two developing, three proficient, four distinguished. And levels three and four are considered to be on grade level or above. Each color compares those scores as well. Because this is difficult to read, I've given you this copy. We obviously want higher numbers in green and blue and lower numbers in red and yellow. And if you look from 2015 to 19, this shows we're struggling in our third-grade ELA last year. If you look at the yellow, developing learners in ELA, we unfortunately increased. However, this could mean we actually moved some of our beginning learners that were in red to the yellow, which is growth. And not, sometimes we don't see that when we just look at those scores. So these are the areas that we have talked about at our school that we're working on this year for areas of growth. Because we've had an inconsistent writing instruction, K4, we've contracted with an outside writing workshop consultant who provides professional learning and classroom coaching and support for writing across the curriculum. In reading, adequate instructional time was not really available last year, however, additional minutes have been added this year to all ELA classes, just like at the other elementary schools. Our subgroup, which is our English learner subgroup, last year, this population did not make adequate progress toward proficiency, and students were pulled out to receive a great deal of their instruction. This year, we instituted a more push-in model where the ESOL teacher goes into the classroom and provides the support. And we've also provided some additional curriculum items for her. Also, the, this is the second year these students have been on our campus. And so with that, they've become part of our Harmony family, and so now the parents and the students feel a lot more comfortable and more engaged with the school, and they're just more comfortable with the staff. And you can see it when they're in our building. It makes a huge difference. We needed additional options for students to receive remediation intervention, so we added after-school tutoring for third and fourth grade and ELA in math also this year. In addition, another person has been added to our contract services tutors. This year, we have four instead of three. This allows for more hours with small group and one-on-one intervention groups and specific personalized assistance. We are also able to provide this small group intervention to kindergarten this year, where previously it was just first through fourth. Here are our strategies that are going to move us forward. These are the things that we started this year that are new. We obviously want to get better in every area, so here are some of the strategies to assist in our growth. In reading, we've obviously implemented the growing readers like the other, the other two elementary schools. This initiative provides this professional learning K through three to our ELA teachers. Our academic coach is actually re-delivering the PL to our fourth-grade teachers. We actually started accelerated reader this year. It was not at Harmony in the past, in last year, or I think the year before. In writing, we're providing, again, the professional learning for every teacher in order to implement a consistent curriculum K through four in writing. In math, we've implemented a new personalized learning platform that now reaches all the way down to kindergarten and continues through fourth grade. We're using math exemplars, more hands-on activities, and practicing with the Georgia frameworks to build the rigor in our math classrooms. Part of scheduling, one of the issues with scheduling, I believe, at Harmony last year was we are having, this year, we've chosen to do two blocks per day for every student, of course, except kindergarten. So that means less transition time, because in our fourth grade last year, they were transitioning to every subject area. So it was losing a lot of transitional time in the hallways and just moving around the building. So we've eliminated that transitional time. We've added minutes in ELA that provides intervention time. We've provided after-school tutoring, just like I spoke of. We're pushing in in our EL classrooms. Our special ed department, which, I hate to say this, and I love my special ed department, they're awesome. We are cross-training our special ed teachers so that they are familiar with our multiple different settings in the building. Also, we have a consistent special ed co-teacher in third grade and fourth grade, and that enables the students to have that same teacher kind of with them all the time. So it's not, I think Ms. Halfoe was actually talking about that at her school, so it's not a different teacher with them at different times. To help sustain our positive climate, we have started two different student groups this year. Harmony Heroes are students from each grade level that are recognized each month. They must demonstrate integrity, honesty, patience, caring, selflessness, often putting others before themselves. And we also just began the Harmony Ambassadors program. These are our fourth-grade students who were nominated based on their leadership qualities, ability to help others in responsibilities shown at Harmony. The ambassadors will assist with events throughout the school year, as well as be a kindness and be a friend to anyone in need. Our school leadership, we're very proud of. We are providing, we are providing training for our leadership team to be teacher leaders instead of just messengers. At our monthly meetings, we try to have at least one activity for our grade chairs. They can do, they can go to work with their teams, going back to their department. In addition to in-house training, our teachers and leaders attend RISA and PACE-sponsored professional learning to build our leadership capacity. And we've added PLCs and vertical alignment meetings that are being led and facilitated by our academic coach. Our administrative leadership team is more cohesive, have the same goals, and are working to build our relationships with teachers and families and students this year. We, I just want to kind of end with this. We are very proud to be part of the Harmony Elementary family and know that our school is moving in the right direction. We're reading more than ever this year. That's the biggest difference I can tell you so far this year. It's amazing. Building relationships with our students and families and ensuring our high standards are being taught by supporting our teachers and conducting curriculum impact checks with our academic coach and PLCs. So I thank you for this time this morning and giving me the opportunity to lead HES. Guys, any questions?
Can you tell me just real quick how you do your two blocks? Are you embedding science and social studies?
We are. We are embedding science and social studies in with the math blocks. They each are 135, two 135-minute blocks.
Do all grade levels have two-block periods?
Kindergarten does not. Kindergarten does not. First through fourth does, though.
You mentioned the individualized...
Platform.
Is this like a computer program? You all have something where they, they're on the computer X number of minutes a day?
There's some of that, but it's teacher-led, but what it does is it addresses what needs they have, the software does.
Right.
And then that way, they know specifically what standards that student needs to go back and work on. Do they need to be remediated? Do they need to be retested? Where can they go from there? So it helps them adjust some of their learning so this student will not be working on something completely different than this student, just very personalized.
Do y'all use I-Lear?
We use USA Test Prep in third and fourth grade, and we just started, actually, this week with DreamBox, which is a new program that we've had, and it's, so far, it's been fantastic. I mean, we've only really had it about a week, but the kids love it. And it's very personalized to their, to their abilities.
That's great.
How do you feel about the shortened school days? I was hoping you were going to get that one. I'll see. I think it's probably the same concerns that these ladies have. It's always, teachers don't want to cut out any minutes because there is so much to cover. They have so many things to cover. I think really what we get into, the shortened school day is, technically, what we're talking about is not the school day, it's that it's long, it's that we're there so far, you know, so early in the morning and so late in the evening. And that's not really the school part of it, it's the care part of it. So I think that that's the part that would be adjusted. I would not necessarily want to take any minutes away from our actual school day. But I, and our little ones, the K1 and 2, and I will tell you, coming from middle school and high school and coming to see that, it's hard to see. It's exhausting. It's very exhausting for the little kids to be there. And I don't even know that that's possible, that's adding another route, but where they might even not have the longer day, or you stagger your day, or something like that. So it's just, it's just an option. I just know that the minutes we use at school, our teachers are using every single minute, and it would, it would concern me if we took any of those minutes away.
Do you think that there's a possibility that we could look at other types of minutes? Right now, we're doing 30-minute recesses or 40-minute recesses, cutting those down, cutting some other things down possibly to accomplish getting out a little early, and not as much necessarily the academic part of the day?
Right, right.
Or, I mean, would that be a possibility, or would you prefer to extend the day?
I'm not extending the day. I think that the recess is needed, but I think there are a few minutes here and there. One of the, I mean, seriously, in fourth grade this year, just by not changing those classes, was a huge help academically, and that was just a little bitty tweak that we had to make to save those minutes. So I'm not going to say there's not any minutes that we could change, because there probably is, if we really went down and looked at it. I just wouldn't want to change in academic. A few minutes here and there.
I know y'all are all given the option now of the two recesses or one. How many are utilizing two recesses? There's a dependent, I guess, on what y'all have going on.
Our kindergarten, my kindergarten, there's two.
Kindergarten, two.
But it's shorter recess. I do two 20-minute recesses.
I do two 30, but the way mine is, is right after lunch, they don't get that full 30-minute with one of them, but just kindergarten has two.
It's only kindergarten.
Yeah.
But for first through fourth grade, we have extended it to 45 minutes this year, which is the longest one we've had in a long time.
My fourth grade only. Mine is like that, except my fourth grade is only 30 minutes.
My fourth grade's 30, and first, second, third, and fourth, fifteenth.
Forty-five. But that includes their transition time to get out there, come back, it's all of that time. Mine, too.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan.
Thank you, guys.
I would thank all three of you for being here this morning. I know y'all have a lot going on. I think for us, this was a great insight, you know, because we hear a lot of chatter from everybody about all kinds of stuff. No one knows what's going on in your building better than y'all, so I really appreciate it. Any more questions for them?
Thank you.
Well, welcome to stay, but feel free to leave. I know y'all have a lot going on. Thank y'all very much. All right, we will move right along. We have our college and career coach, Mr. Daniel Bell, who's familiar to this room. Thank you, Board of Education, Dr. Wilson, Mr. Young. I appreciate the opportunity to come out here. This is not going to be a, you know, just only an information-type session. I wouldn't take up your time as much as I've watched you stand here for three hours like Mr. Young accused me of not doing that in joking, because I know I can really get going and talking about this stuff. But this is, you have to do that, too. I don't have a problem with that. But this is something that I want to bring just enough information, and the actual purpose of lying here is going to be, I'm going to ask that the board and the superintendent take a look at a current policy that can have some impacts on some initiatives that we've got going on here. So when I ask that, I want you to have the information that leads up to that. And what I've been working on here, this is basically a Pickens County Schools workforce pipeline. And what I'm looking at, everything that we do in the school system is a pipeline into the workforce in some manner and at some point. And, you know, very much of what the elementary school teachers were talking about, they're part of the pipeline. Everybody's job is a part of this pipeline. So that's what most of this is going to be talking about. In your little packet of stuff there, I just handed a couple of things there. There's several pages that look very familiar, but that front page is just a, just a quick little matrix of what I put together, just so you could have an idea of some of the things I'm talking about as far as this workforce pipeline. Obviously, it starts in elementary schools, and I've got a lot of career-related things there, starting in elementary school, the career explorations, career fairs. And while I'm thinking about it, November 22nd, we're going to have a career fair at Pickens High School. And it's going to be the Friday that's before our Thanksgiving break. And it's going to be the day that we chose, that we know there would be less instructional interruptions during that day. And that way, it's not going to, it's not going to hurt anything. We're giving notice out. Mr. Wallace has been really good about working with us and he's gonna let the teachers know, try to get everything taken care of before that day because it's gonna be a career day there. And in most cases in the past, career days have had to work around instruction as opposed to instruction working around career days. And even on the state level, you know, a lot of deals have been passed that are very career related deals and things have been put in place, our bridge requirements that we have to do. It's gotten very specific on what we need to do there. And that's what we're working on. Now, I'm not gonna talk about all these different initiatives, but the career fair is a big part of it. We are, the career fair, the 22nd, will be sixth grade all the way through 12th grade. And it has become an extremely complicated matrix of time to get everybody from sixth grade through 12th grade into that high school. And, you know, there's the transportation, you should see the matrix that's been worked on to get that time schedule for the buses to deliver, drop off, take back in the timeframe that they need to be there. And of course, I've had the help with, help from Chris Parker to high school. She's been extremely good. She has helped me so much or I'd never be up to this point to get this pulled off by the 22nd. But we're going up at the top here, you're gonna see what's called U-Scienc. And maybe you've heard of U-Scienc and maybe some of your conferences so far that you've been going to. U-Scienc is a tool that we're going to implement that assesses students based on interest and aptitude. So it's focused on aptitudes. We've always, since every person in this room have asked students, what do you want to do when you get out of school? What do you want to do? And instead of saying what are your aptitudes, we always ask them what they want to do. Sometimes what they want to do and what they have the aptitude to do, to do is not, they do not align. So even, even on the state level, Senate Bill 401, it was passed last year, it specifically states that it went from, it changed from requirements that say interest-based to interest and aptitude-based. The state of Georgia has passed, they have approved and paid for U-Scienc to be implemented into all schools by all students. It can be done in middle school, so it's a one-hour process in middle school, which we're gonna use in the junior high. And then, and then it goes into the high school. It's an hour and a half system. So it's gonna be really good, especially when it comes to advisement. So the advisement piece of this is gonna be really, really good. And I think within the next year, we're gonna be using U-Scienc results in a lot of different ways as far as getting our students advised in the right places. So I just wanted to, I put that in here just to cover that, all right? Also, in part of what we do that looks at the students and these students, when we, when we're actually advising a student, and advisement is a big thing that I have a lot of plans for in the future, how do you advise 1,350 students when it becomes individualized? Because the time does not, time's not there. So you're trying to do it in group, how do you get down to that? So efficiency of advisement is something that I'm really trying to look at for the future. And I think there's some things that we can do because right now we are nowhere near where we need to be to advise correctly. And it's just a sure, it's a ratio of people that's advising in comparison to the number of students. So there's things that we can do ahead. But through dual enrollment, we do a lot of this through dual enrollment. And most, most everybody has an idea of what dual enrollment is, it's been around a long time. And even though I put this in here, these are things that I would show to a, you know, at a dual enrollment night that allows our students to...
Was that my phone? Sorry about that.
That's okay. So dual enrollment, we do a lot of, it's a, it's being utilized. We had about 68 students dual enrolled for fall. That was the highest that's ever been dual enrolled, the highest, the number prior to that was 47, and that was in the fall of 2017. Now, it, just because we have a lot of numbers, that doesn't mean that we're still doing what we need to do. You know, what do we want out of dual enrollment? Why are we dual enrolling and what are they getting out of it? That's, that's what we want to look at. And so it's not just a numbers thing. We had, we had about 10 at midterm this year that we had to, this semester that we had to pull out just based on grades because they start transcript and it gets, if they start having, you know, poor grades there, then it can impact that transcript. So we take precautions to pull them out, put them somewhere else.
What's the total dual enrollment?
Well, the total was, it started out at about 68, but now we had a couple that would, that got out early. But around that 67 to 68 number was our number. And then I think we had about 10 at midterm. The colleges, they are required by the state of Georgia to send us a report at midterm to let us know where that student currently stands because we have no ability to pull up a grade on that student. They're a college student at that point, but we need to be a safety net if possible and protect those students in any way we can. So we had about 10 pull out and then, and we still have the mass majority who are going to re-enroll again that appear to be successful, we'll continue on. Plus, we have quite a few more new ones. So we will continue that increase and then this will, this next spring semester will even overtake what we had this semester. But back in June of 20, of this year, 2019, the State Board of Education approved what's called Dual Enrollment Option B. Dual Enrollment Option B is a different platform that people have a hard time when it says Dual Enrollment Option B, they don't really fully understand what that is. But it's, I look at it more as just a different graduation plan. And I relate it back to when I was in high school, when you chose a career path or you chose a college prep path. So right now, we're currently under what I consider to be the best scenario to advise students that are not gonna go to a four-year college. And I think we can recognize that, you know, while they're in high school and then get them on a path that's going to be more successful for those students. Now, looking at our current graduation requirements, and this is something you're all very familiar with here, that where we currently stand, what they have to have being the four units of English, math, science, social studies, and the health and PE. Dual Enrollment Option A just simply lets those students go into a technical college if they choose. And of course, they have to be admitted in. And then they, they can take, you know, classes as long as they are approved by the state of Georgia to count back at the high school. This is another plan, works out really, really good in a lot of cases for a lot of students. And like I said, that's the number that I was referring to that we have taken advantage of that. All right, Dual Enrollment Option B takes those four requirements and it turns it into two requirements in each area. And the state approved, and they dictate which ones that we have to teach to those students. Ninth grade, ninth grade lead is one of the English. And then we can choose any other English for that student. And then they have to have algebra and geometry, they have to have biology, and then just another science. And then they have to have two areas of social studies and then they still have to have PE. So that's basically nine credits there that they have to have that satisfies their high school requirements at that point, all right? If that wants to, and this can be done in conjunction with, they do not have to complete this before they can start this process. This process can be started along with, provided they have whatever testing that we use, we use PSAT scores in a lot of cases, we use acupuncture is gonna be our other method that we normally are gonna dual enroll students with. So it has different layers of testing that we can get them, that they can qualify on. And PSAT, when they allowed us to use PSAT this year, it saved a ton of time because it was very easy to pull PSAT reports for a junior wanting to dual enroll. And I didn't have to send them to test, which is gonna create time there for them to set up an appointment. So there's a big lack of time. This was instant that I could have that student ready to dual enroll. But a student can take a, and they can get an associate degree under this program, they can get a, and this is gonna be primarily what we're looking at right here, is the technical college diploma. So anything that we currently have, you know, automotive, all those different things that you see in that packet right there are areas. And it's not limited just to those, those are the ones that are very easy for us to achieve. They have to meet that diploma in anything, any academics that are required on the college level to get that diploma, which is usually, and the way it currently stands, is another math, another English, a psychology class, and a computer class. So I know we're cutting out the requirements on the high school side, but they're still gonna have to do some academics on the, on the college side. And those academics are gonna be, if they're only going for that diploma, it's only diploma level English, math. So if they've completed algebra and geometry, they will be successful in that math class on the technical college diploma side. So this, this really is gonna help these students a lot as we move forward. And there's also some other things in that, in that, that rule that allows in a couple of areas that there's two technical certificates that can be utilized. One of those areas is in welding. And welding, once they meet the requirements, all the high school requirements, just like the other one, there's two certificates they could get and that would satisfy, now this is the state that I'm talking about, the state requirement, that would allow them to get their diploma based on the state requirements. And now, some of the downside to do in this, and we've got some areas we're looking at here, is if a student's going to a four-year college at some point, they're bypassing their foreign languages, you know? And, but the overwhelming majority of the students that are gonna be doing this are most likely not going to a four-year college. Or this is not gonna prevent them from having to catch that back up on a college level later because lots of people wait later in life before they go back and get colleges. So we've got that and we've got some students who are doing this already that, that's are looking at when do, when are we teaching foreign language? Can, can that fit in their technical college schedule? So it's a combination, so it's just an unlimited number of options that they have right there. We're looking at, every student needs to get to the tier that they can be successful in, and that's what we're trying to advise them to do. So we're not leaving anything unturned here when we're, when we're advising these students. All right, the, the question as far as our, the graduation requirements from Pickens County being 28 is in a scenario, and I put this one, this is air conditioning diploma, it's not taught here, but it's taught at Canton, and it is, it is a, it is a very good program there. And over on the left side, you can see I put down the requirements for the high school, that's your nine credits there. And then all the classes on the right side are what's required for that diploma on, on the technical college side. Now, you can see that credits that would be issued back at the high school would equal 14, that's minimum. Now, based on some elective choice and everyone in these programs, there's often, I just chose the minimum classes to get to 14, okay? Down on the right side, I put that would equate to 23 credits at the high school. That would, that would be less than our 28 required. Now, what I did not put in there on the high school side, typically if a student is a freshman and a sophomore, there's gonna be more classes in there because there's 16 spots that we can get students in. So under this, with this particular program here, I don't think that this student would be lacking any, any high school requirements under our current 28. I think they would even meet it or even exceed it in most cases. But, and then welding's gonna be the one that has the certificates. This is a typical welding program right here under the Option B. And here's the one that I referred to with the certificates that could potentially cause us a concern with having enough credits, is they take care of their high school credits and I've got the minimum, like I said, I left out any additional credits there, but just looking at bare minimum, there's only six credit hours required on the technical college side to get those two certificates. So it's a very small number. And they choose between, they can choose any two of those certificates to meet the requirements, okay? And I think where somebody missed the boat on this one is in both of those certificates, two of the three classes are the same classes. So that's where the original credit hours accumulated. So you take the first two classes and then you don't have to take two more to get two certificates out of it. So basically six credits, that would put us in a very low number for a, for a graduation. Now, what we would be looking at, when we look at advising a student in this case, is what I'm seeing now is we've got students who are juniors, maybe this is their first semester as a junior, and they are not on the path to graduate under the conventional system. So we were looking at what can we do to catch this student before potential dropout, things that could happen, this just becomes another safety net that we can put in place to where if deemed this is in the best interest of that student, can we get that student in there, get them to meet these requirements before graduation? This is a four-year plan from the time they start ninth grade. So there's a time window that this has to happen in. So we're looking at that time window is what, what we're trying to do as far as advisement. This is a worst-case scenario that I'm, that I'm coming to you with here. I don't think this is gonna be common, but you just don't want to advise students in a case and then it not meet that requirements because this is gonna require, anything that we do like this right here, this becomes very individualized, you gotta have checks and balances in place. So my thoughts were, when we meet with a student in this, this student has typically already had some struggles in high school. There's already gonna be some history there as where this student struggles. So having a, having myself in the meeting, having the, our leading technology, not the technology, but our instructional specialist at the high school involved, and then having a current teacher, having a counselor involved, and then parent and student and explaining this process. And when we make the choice, it is a, it's a really good checks and balances, a strong committee is gonna sign off on this. And then basically, what I would want is a waiver in, if all the checks and balances are placed, in place, and this student, in the best interest of this student, we're making this choice or helping them, advise them because it ultimately comes down to the parent and the student because they're signing off, that they know that this is what they're doing and they know the requirements, then we would advise that student. But the, where we currently stand in that particular case, and I don't, and I don't think in the future we'll have this concern. I think in the future, if we advise correctly, we would not be up against this gun, you know? But right now, when I get some certain students and teachers are contacting me and saying, I think I've got a student who might be a best, better fit for Option B. And what we're trying to call, what I'm, what I'm trying to refer to Option B as, instead of just calling Option B, is calling it our workforce-ready graduation plan. Because it is a graduation plan, it's gonna give that student something that they can go directly into the workforce right after. So my, my, my request would be to just take a look at what we can do there and see if this is something that we could get approved that would, as long as we got the checks and balances so that students, I don't want to blanket this over everybody, but under the rare circumstances that we do this. Now, the Option B is gonna become very popular. And, and just for some, for some information, you know, over half the jobs in the state of Georgia, they require mid-skilled training. So that's technical college jobs is what they are. We are not currently, you know, serving our students to, to meet that, to meet the job force needs. So I think we're well under, we're way under that on what we're doing here. And I've got some students that I would not need this, the large committee to help advise. These students have already tested high, but they do not want to continue under the conventional graduation. Some of us are already dual enrolled in programs at ChatTech, real successful there. And what we're doing with them is the students who are academically strong enough, they are going ahead and signing up for a degree level core there that satisfies their diploma. And then also it sets them up, we have an applied technical management associate degree there that we're knocking out basically three birds with one stone. It's gonna satisfy the high school requirements, satisfy their diploma requirements there, and it gives them that jumpstart on that associate degree. So we're putting this in place, just making sure every step is taken for every student that comes, that comes before us that wants to do that.
Daniel, do you think that it would be, is there an advantage? I know we discussed it somewhat over the last year or so, possibility of going from what we require 28 to what the actual state requires at 23, just as a general policy?
You know, I don't know about that. I think, you know, under block schedule, and I'm a supporter of block schedule, I know this has been talked about even before I was on the board and every year I was on the board, but we never did address it to a really considering it in a level. I tend, I think that what we do, if we look at our graduation rate, which is high 90s, I think that if we go lower, then we will have students getting out, you know, I mean, they're gonna meet their high school requirements. We all want them to get something out of high school. My opinion is you need something outside of your high school to be ready for the workforce. When we contain a student, and I say contain like that's bad, but... When we contain a student, and I say contain like that's bad, but it's not, we have them in that high school, if we can put them under these kind of plans here to where they can graduate while they're still contained, they get a lot of support until they graduate. Once they get out, the technical college graduation rate is not what Pickens County schools are. I mean, obviously, it would take care of my scenario here that I'm asking for, but overall, that becomes a little bit different, you know, case. And, you know, I don't know what the state legislature is going to do as far as with doing enrollment. They have ta, there's a lot of things they've already tabled, but what I currently have right here is what's allowable now, and if I made a decision on what, you know, trying to anticipate what's going to happen, we would never serve a child. So, you know, I'm going to keep an eye on how that, I know some of these numbers are going to change, some of this stuff's going to change on the state level this coming legislative session, I know it will. But I'll, you know, we'll handle that when it comes, but right now, I want to put this stuff in place so that we can move today. But that's a good question, and it's a hard one, you know, because a lot of these students, especially now that we teach a lot of classes in the junior high, they're bringing, you know, some credits already into the high school. So we're looking at seniors, you know, and even some juniors, they've got some free spaces in there because they're meeting all their acquired, you know, classes there, but because it being on block and it being 28, there's still slots there left over, which is good for a student that wants to do enroll. You know, it opens up that, you know, we've got a lot of students that are fully doing enroll, they're, well, seniors, and completed everything that they got to complete. So that's a tough one to make a call on. I have my personal feelings, I tend to like to hold them long as possible, just to, because I just think they, if we can get them advised and get them into things while they still have that parental support that says, I want my child to graduate high school, and a lot of times that goes away after, once they meet that milestone, the more we can give them while they're in there, provided we're giving them what they need on an individual basis, not just so we can look at that graduation rate, you know? And I know what that means to us, it does the state of Georgia, you know, they score us on that. But, and then another little bit of a disadvantage here that I would want everybody to be aware of, under this option B plan, if a student, when they meet all their high school requirements, and they go to that tech school, obviously, they're not monitored near the level they are on that high school. All right? Even though I go over and I'm in contact with those instructors, it's not every day I'm over there. And industry, business and industry is in those schools wanting to hire those people right away. So now, we potentially could have students who would not complete because they got a job, and then thus, Pickens County schools' graduation rate would start reflecting that. Now, this student would have a job, which is our ultimate mission anyhow, but it could show up somewhere down the road, because I had to deal with retention. As soon as these students got a job, you know, the industry's saying, don't go back to school, I'll teach you everything you need to know, and they're looking at coming to school for two or three days and working two or three, a lot of times that paycheck, it's very easy to just say, yeah, I'll go ahead and quit, because I've got a good job now, you know? So that could be a, you know, something, and, you know, I don't know, there's no way we can handle, you know, we could just encourage it, you know, and say it is involved as much as possible to prevent that from happening.
Do you have students, do you think would qualify for this waiver type thing you're describing as soon as this school year?
Well, we're fit, by the time, what's going to happen is, is I've had some students that I've already looked at, and I'm talking a small number, but there's other students in there that I have not, you know, and I'm going to say identify, because how do you identify? You know, and until somebody brings it to your attention and says, please look at this student, and what I'm doing now is just literally, if a teacher comes to me and says, look at this student, I just start, I do audit on their transcript to see where they are, when did they start ninth grade? And then I break this down, and then, and when you say, you know, when I say identify, it's not like you can have a specific rubric in place, because there's a lot involved in determining if this student needs to go a different path. Some of it's very clear, but to be able to put it in a very specific, you know, something you're checking out, it's not, that's why I wanted a strong committee there in place to look at that whole child, you know, are they, can they attend school, are they even attending, and is that going to be reflected when they get out of there? We can't, they're going to continue to fund the corrections in the state of Georgia's Department of Corrections. We know we're never going to catch everybody, we know that, but we, in certain cases here, I think we can make it. We have, I've already seen some students that when the parents realize what we were here, what we were saying, that, you know, I know, they'll say, I know my son is shut down, and I don't know what else to do. All of a sudden now, you see the parent and the child come to life, like, holy smokes, you mean, I could do this instead? And, you know, so I see the positive side of that, but yeah, they are, identifying them all is going to be the, is going to be the concern. I do want to meet with Mr. Shea at some point in looking at another process that I, and we may have the technology, I just don't know how to use it when it comes to the actual, actual auditing that transcript, I'm basically doing it, everybody pull up transcript, but it's very easy for me to make a mistake when I am looking at that student and making sure we're getting the, making sure the checks are there, you know, so I've got some things I want to work with him on. That's for the efficiency of what we're doing, is to get more children to be able to handle more. Any questions?
Is there a timeline or date line you need us to look at?
No, the 15th of this month is our deadline for doing enrollment, and everybody that we have currently met with, we've already, you know, we're in that process to where we're probably going to meet it, but what's going to happen is, is I've still got students that I know I need to look at, and they're not going to make it now, because this is all the, everything has to be done by the 15th. Once that 15th passes by, then even though I've got more lists, this is going to be something I have to look at, starting, and it starts already, I mean, because this process, as soon as we come back after, after the Christmas break, I'll be looking at students and starting the doing enrollment process again, and so, you know, it does not have to be tomorrow, but we are advising some students now under this, under this path, but the credits are probably going to be there, you know, in this. And also going back, I'm going back in and working with the junior high, the new counselors there, I've been in communication with them, everything that we're doing, they're doing, and then also looking at our schedule, when students actually come into that high school, the more that we can sequence those classes in that freshman and sophomore year, that way, we are already taking care of students on that side before we ever even have to, you know, we're not committing any student, we're just setting up everybody, they have to, every student has to have that. So the more that we can do of that in ninth and 10th grade, get them ready, because those two years would be critical for them to complete what they need to do on the college side.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank y'all for letting me come.
Thanks for all you're doing.
When you have a free, three hours, I will come back and talk about it. Yeah. And make sure you come to that career fair, this career fair is going to be good, it's got, we're lining it up, and as soon as, next year when we do this, we're going to have our youth science results for students, and we're going to base it on the aptitude, we're going to set it up really in connection, we're going to have, we're going to have all the educational facilities from high school, post-secondary, and then industry is what we're going to have this year, it's going to be the biggest one that's been down there, so I think it's going to be really good.
Where's it going to be held?
It's going to be at the high school.
Yeah, but I mean...
We went, we had it all laid out, but then we spoke with Mr. Wallace, and he sort of put us in a better location, we were just sort of resistant to the new gym, just because we didn't want to mess up the new gym, but he said we could cover it really well, it does give us more room, so it's going to be in the new gym area, and we're going, it's going to be a, it's not a free-for-all, it's not about how many, you know, a lot of talks you can grab off people's tables, this is going to be a very engaging, in a career fair, and it's going to be controlled, we're going to control the flow through there, so, because it tends to become a social gathering in the center of the gym when you're having career fairs, we're going to try to eliminate that and make it where it's going to be beneficial.
I like the proponent of the aptitude.
Yes.
Because I had students that struggled academically, but they insisted that they were going to be in nutrition or something like that, and you knew that wasn't going to happen, but this is good to help them.
It will be, it'll be reality, it'll be things that they never realized themselves, but now they get to see it. So, good by them.
I'm glad.
Yeah. Yeah, it's going to be good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, just a couple of quick things, and then we'll get into the, another few Just start with, I've given you also a three-month calendar, it's not a complete calendar, it's a calendar of just some events on the district level and a few things like that, and I'll try to update that every month, so I'll, you'll have a rolling three-month calendar, I've tried to do and read those things that are specifically for you, but also you're inviting the other stuff that we have too. So if you have any questions about that little calendar, just let me know. The big sheets that you've gotten, well, let me start with the two little sheets, you've got these two sheets, you've got one that's this one and one is this one. This also goes along with CCRPI and the scores, and what we did here is, this one tracks it by grade level by year, so basically you're looking at what the, what the teacher, you're looking at that grade level, that teacher, over the three or four years. But the other one, the blue one here, is actually tracking that particular grade level and how they compare at the different grade levels. And also, I've got the big sheet here that breaks down historically CCRPI and everything that they also presented, but it's all of them with a two-year history with it, some of it has a three-year history, and so take those with you, and then we'll be glad, I'll be glad to discuss them anytime once you look over at me or them. Also, there was a request for an updated organizational chart, and I believe all of you have that, if you have any questions about that, just please let me know. All right, I'm assuming the next thing would be calendars? I've given you five different calendars, I also gave you Cobb and Cherokee. Now, I need to explain Cobb and Cherokee. They're still both on traditional schedules, they're not on the block schedule. Also, Cherokee and Cobb, first semester is 88 days. I found it interesting with Cobb, though, on second semester, they only go 90 days, where Cherokee goes 92 days to make it 180 days. And the teachers in Cobb only go 188 days, I'm not sure what they do as far as making it up or not. But I had those for comparison purposes. These are just ideas and suggestions. I did send out a survey to the high school, or Mr. Wallace did, and I should have sent a calendar, because I think they didn't have clearly all the information on whether or not coming back after Christmas, but the majority I would prefer not to come back after Christmas and have classes, they would prefer to end first semester before Christmas if possible.
Yeah, I think that's, my opinion, I didn't teach high school, but I just think it'd be better for kids just to be able to test and finish up.
Yeah, and that's what's a lot of thought, they did. But, I mean, in order to start late in August, you have to do away with the breaks, or you have to go into January, or a combination of the two.
Can't have both ways?
No, you can't, you can't. A little easier second semester to end before Memorial Day, because there's more opportunities there. But first semester, once you get in, fall break, Thanksgiving, and then it gets, you run out of dates.
Did the teachers in the survey, were they willing to give up their breaks in order to do that?
I didn't send them the actual calendars, I just, we just asked the question about starting later in August and finishing in January. I have talked to some teachers historically, last year and this year, about calendars. Some would like to do away with some of the breaks, some would like to wrap around the breaks, and the hard part is, is once you start giving breaks, it is hard to take them out. And I've had some people within the community, I had a couple of them tell me not long ago that they didn't care when we started school, but don't touch fall break, because that, and winter break, because that's when they started planning their family vacations on those days. So you're not going to, I mean, of course, well, we're not going to make everybody happy, but what I'd like to do at some point soon is to, you know, as soon as we can, get this next year's calendar approved, but then come back as soon as possible and approve. So I'd like to start shortly, where we're approving two years of calendars at one time, so parents really can plan.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I've got two comments on the calendars, and I know that, you know, that we traditionally kind of linked with Cherokee's calendars, and so, and if we do, I mean, that's fine, but this is where I was coming from this morning, and on Cherokee's calendar, you know, it's got, you know, the last day of school on the 28th of May, and then you've got Memorial Day on the 31st, and it's coming back with two days of post-planning on June 1st and 2nd, and it's a 92-day second semester.
Right.
So what I'm, what I, where I was coming from was to drop back to a 90-day semester on that second semester, in school on possibly the 26th of May, put the two post-planning days in on the 27th and 28th, and everybody be done by Memorial Day. And I, you know, to get the teachers to 190 days, that's what I'm talking about, is logging, I mean, you know, I mean, there's so many duties that can be done that teachers already do, that I think we can easily make up that 16 hours, you know, if the principals do the documentation, the principals do, do roster, things like that. So that's where I was coming from, and also, if we choose to go a different direction, and we're looking at some of these calendars, for instance, example, option one, where the last day of school is May 25th, but graduation is not set up until May 29th, what I would rather see us do, the seniors tend to, you know, we usually give the seniors the last few days off for graduation practice, things like that, I would rather, instead of having the last day of school on Tuesday and not graduate until Saturday, let's graduate the Friday before, and let the underclassmen come to school on Monday and Tuesday. I mean, that's just, as a, you know, high school person, I'm just throwing that out, you know?
That's possible, absolutely.
To go ahead and just tie that up, because you're going to be sitting there, those seniors are not going to come to school that whole last week, but you're holding them here for graduation, so let's go ahead and let them graduate, move them on out, and they, you know, they don't have to come that last week at all. So that's just thoughts.
Do you think the underclassmen will come that last week?
They follow exams, I mean, they don't have an option, you know what I'm saying? I mean, that, those last two days, that's final exams for them. But the seniors have already taken final exams, and all they would be doing would be staying around for graduation practice. And so, I mean, in every school, senior final exams are, that very last week are always before the underclassmen final exams, so.
We graduated that way, senior graduated, and then the underclassmen still had another week at school.
I mean, that's just the way it's supposed.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yes, we could do that, that wouldn't be a possibility, probably, But so, I mean, that could affect all, the calendars I've still got looking at, because I'm assuming that we don't want to go after Memorial Day, calendars one...
That's the calendar file.
Yeah. I still have out one, two, three, and four.
That's what I'm...
And there's some differences, a few differences, and of course, we can, on all of those, we can move that graduation, now, there's, let's see, well, one of them, three of them, 176 days, and one of them's 180 days. And looking at, let's see, calendar one, now, the calendar one is pretty close to, it does spread out a little bit of the in-service days. It also, on that one, Donna, I mean, even had two days to be announced or planned, which could take that in consideration already. I looked at, now, Cherokee does do their fall break in September. Now, originally, we were doing it around Columbus Day, instead of taking Columbus Day off, and so I know one of the calendars has it in September, I believe, one of them has it in October, and then what I did is, I counted the weeks between August... And then what I did is I counted the weeks between August and Thanksgiving and stake it halfway between September and October. So, I mean, they're just minor differences in most of those calendars. So, you know, whatever y'all want to do, or any other changes.
Well, you know, I had an elementary parent talk to me this past week. And they were talking about that they had a first grader. And they said that, you know, the first grader, they had just gotten into the routine, and we had fall break in September. And said it really threw, you know, their child kind of out of sync having that week-long break after they just had got adapted to that. And, but now, you know, from a teacher's standpoint, that September break's nice. But I mean, when you look at it from, you know, a student's perspective.
Originally, we had it in October, but the previous board wanted it in September to match Cherokee's. Is the reason we went to September on that one.
And I know, going back to what you said about vacations, it appears that, you know, I guess you start getting a cut rate about that kind of stuff. So I think that's why parents like it so much, is they can do stuff with their kids, like cruises and stuff like that. But the rates have gone down because it's not, it's considered fall instead of, you know, summer time.
You're right.
It's very painful for me to watch you on this crutches.
I'm fine.
Would you mind sitting down?
Actually, it, and I've got a stool right here.
Okay.
I've got a stool that I can sit on.
I just want to make sure you're okay.
I'm actually a little more comfortable right this morning.
Okay.
Tony pointed out that if you move the graduation the week earlier, that it would give you a second Friday as an option if there were rain.
And that is, I mean, I just, I like the second options if it rains. But I don't know how, I mean.
I think a Saturday option would be better for rain than a holiday of the week, you know what I'm saying?
Because I think you'll probably have a lot of people coming from out of town.
Out of town, yeah.
And if they plan for this weekend, it might be difficult for them to go to a summer weekend.
I originally wanted us to try and look at expanding summer summits we could have, based on what I heard, and to the, I think from an operational standpoint, we could benefit of having a little longer summer to get things done, maybe some construction. But, you know, like a lot of things, once you start looking at stuff, it doesn't look as easy as it does. And, you know, there's a lot of concerns I've heard with ending first, mainly like the high school, with ending first semester in January. I don't play that as a good idea, and even things I did think of. There's some limitations potentially if you're running with your enrollment. Your enrollment will be starting.
AP testing.
AP testing, because those, that second semester, they might not have as much classroom time before the exam, because those exam dates are set, I think, basically. And, you know, they don't have much wiggle room around it. So I do think we need to keep the first semester ending in December, before Christmas break.
Plus, we sometimes get more snow days in January, and that might throw things off as well.
So, you know, I'd be open and fine looking at keeping similar to what we're doing now. Or if we wanted to try and get a little more time, you know, I like four okay, you know, you get a week later start. Only thing I didn't, you know, I guess we could look at four, some options, the, I kind of, you know, I kind of liked how even though they wouldn't get a full week before fall break, they would get a four-day weekend tied into Labor Day, although that's very quick after we start.
It is. And one of the reasons I looked at that Friday is we, transportation, we had issues with the amount of Jeeps on these back roads and stuff. And Stacy made the statement that he wished that we had Friday before Labor Day off. And that was just a, we can deal with it either way. But if we, starting there on the 10th, that was the reason I went ahead and just did those, and then also around Columbus Day, just made those an in-service. Now, what we could do is we actually could swap either the 12th for the 4th and make the 4th an in-service day. I mean, the kids still would be out both weekends. But I mean, as far as staff members go, I don't know if it'd be better to have a long Labor Day weekend or a medium Labor Day and medium Columbus Day.
That could be an option. And I even thought too, if we wanted to do something like four, you know, I could do, you know, because I've actually heard, I think they like both breaks, but I've heard some people maybe like fall break more than winter break. And I also got, I actually talked with Martha, and Martha made the point too. She thought maybe that, you know, people have just earned all their money on Christmas and they don't have enough money to go in winter break and things like that. So we could either maybe potentially reverse and keep a fall break, and you could tie in a long MLK weekend in February or something like that. So, I mean, there's a lot of options, there's no doubt. Problem is, I'm looking at test.
You just, I mean, I can adjust it any way y'all want to adjust it. I just need y'all to tell me what you want.
Do we need to make the decision today?
Well, we need to, it needs to be voted, now, of course, we can't vote on it today, but we need to either vote on it absolutely no later than December. But we've got, the problem is, is you've got a lot of people out in the community, especially those that are in companies, especially union companies, where they pick vacation by union, by seniority. And, or even not a lot, other companies do the same thing. And so they're, I mean, we've had several phone calls already where parents are stressing out because they have to pick their vacation dates.
I've had single parent, two single parents that have just beaten me up religiously over this because they have to give so much notice.
And that's one reason I'd love for us to get to the point where we could do two years of calendars. Now, we did, the school system did one year. They did two years, but then the second year, they came back and changed it.
Maybe if we could get some guidance today from the board, whether you prefer 176 or 180, whether you prefer to keep fall over winter break, whether you prefer to end first semester before Christmas or after. And then based on that, we could get a calendar together pretty quick, just with that, those general decisions made. We could whip one up.
Well, I like, I think I like number one, if we could look at moving graduation back a week to the 21st.
That's fine.
And I tell you, too, like, I agree that the Jeep Fest weekend has become so big. And I know that they all come in here on Thursdays. Well, they come in all week long. So I think that that is a good idea, not to have school on Friday. But what I would like to see is if what you said, we did option one, is that instead of starting on July 27th, let's move an in-service day to September 4th.
Start on the 28th?
Yeah, start on the 28th and have, you know, five in-service days, but have an in-service day on September 4th.
And that is, okay. It starts school on the 3rd?
No, I mean, we could start school, we could leave it exactly the same. The only thing you're doing is taking away one in-service day and moving it to the 4th.
Just teachers start one day later.
But what that does though, once you start school, it limits once a day.
Yeah, bump school to start on the 3rd.
Yeah, in order to keep the 88.
Yeah, yeah, move school back one day. What do y'all think about that?
Well, could we do that, and after Christmas, could they come back on, instead of having two in-service days, the 4th and 5th, could the kids come back on the 5th?
Not as far as, if anything to do with first semester. You know, if you touch something in first semester, it has to be in first semester. That's one reason we have so many in-service days, the two in-service days in January, the one in April, is because actually, if you count those days up without those in-service days like that, that's 94 two days.
Scroll down.
Looks like a fear.
Nope.
No, scroll back.
I was strongly about stopping finishing work.
Yeah, that's fine.
Scroll down.
Yeah.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty calendar.
Oh, the last year's calendar?
Oh, well, it looks different though.
Well, that's not, that's what I want to rent for fall break. I just want to know what we can get fall break.
This year, it was the third, I think it was the third week in September.
Twenty-third to twenty-seventh.
But I personally, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, any of them's fine, but I kind of like that it was within.
Time to play fall break.
Yeah, as far as having it in September or October. A little bit later in September, or either around Columbus Day. I know a lot of companies route Columbus Day, and we can have fall break here at Columbus Day. So I mean, whatever y'all want to do.
It was, it was the last week in September this year.
Was it last week?
So that would match up with September, I mean, with proposal number one.
What about proposal number one, sooner or later, if you're brainstorming? So that's one brain together.
We're figuring it all, we're figuring it all out.
So what about if you only had four days of pre-planning, July 27th through 31st, and the kids started on the 3rd, on a Monday? And then they could be out on Jeep Fest?
Yes, they could. And that could be an in-service day on them, yes. Yeah, you can do that. That's fine.
So the first in-service day would be July 28th?
Yes.
And the school would start on the 3rd?
In-service would be 27th.
In-service would start on 27th?
No.
You'd be switching, you'd be switching the 3rd for the September 4th?
Right.
Yeah.
So the kids still have the same number of days. They're losing it anyway.
I like that.
Start on the 28th, just cross the 27th out, start on the 28th.
Well, no, you'd just be replacing the 3rd, you'd replace the 3rd in service September 4th.
And leave that July week to the sun.
Just leave, yeah, just leave the July.
July week to say, okay.
And then just flip.
Leave the 3rd and 4th, okay.
And then put the, that in-service day over on Friday of the 4th. And then we'll move graduation up to the 22nd?
Move to the 21st, I think.
Oh, Friday, 21st, that's right, Friday night.
So I guess we'll start our next topic. We're gonna do Friday night, I guess.
Right, is that what high school only?
It was torn, but the majority of the teachers would prefer to do a graduation on Friday night.
And I talked to Chris Wallace, and he told me, I ran into him last night. He told me that he had sent a survey out to, to the seniors. And he said he didn't get a ton of response, he sent out their email, but the ones that he did worked for Friday.
They worked, right? Well, if it doesn't work, we'll go back to Saturday next year.
Well, you know, the only thing I want everybody to be real clear about is that this is our largest graduating class. If it rains on Friday night, then you're looking at the senior and probably four, possibly five tickets to actually watch it live. And as long as parents understand that, I'm fine with it.
What if we did the rain day on Saturday?
There you go.
We could, we could. That's not a problem. I mean, we can look at doing that rain day on Saturday morning.
What, he makes that make too is, I think, if that's what we want to go with, I would say announce that, okay, that graduation will be Friday night. If there's a look like for rain or whatever, by a certain time, we will make the call on Friday. If it looks like it will be clear on Saturday, we'll have it Saturday morning. If it looks like it's gonna rain all weekend, we'll do it Friday night inside, you know. Just lay out those parameters where that's what we're gonna do and make the call.
And let me ask you about this logistic question, because I'm not, you know, I'm not very logical right now. But they'd have to set up the whole stadium for Friday. How hard would it be if there's a big pouring rainstorm, even though we have that good turf field, to get people out there? Because I mean, it's gonna be a lot of drying of chairs, you know.
Oh, and have it Saturday morning?
I mean, if it was a big rain Friday night.
I've had to do that. You can do it. It's not, it's not a deal. I mean, it's easy.
We always, what we set up right now, two places. Well, we set up the gym and we set up the stadium also.
And they practice inside and outside.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're on the calendar. And I know that this was discussed even while I was still working before I retired, is doing a hybrid block at the high school. And, you know, with us going 176 days and kind of, you know, two days off each semester. And, you know, and I've seen Chris and talked to him a little about it a little bit. But it might help our kids as far as our AP classes and things like that, if we went ahead and looked at that hybrid block. And, I mean, I know, and I think the most successful school's been Westeroside, and they've been very successful with it. Have we thought about that lately? I know, like I said, that was like four years ago.
I have been talking to Chris about the block schedule, the whole thing. And he's getting some stuff up to look at. And we're gonna, we're gonna sit down and look at that seriously and get some input from it. I want, I will throw one other thing out real quick about blocks. Don't want anybody to throw anything at me or anything yet. But if you ever get the opportunity, look at a tri semester, yeah.
I did give school on that at one point. It's called quarters.
Yeah, it's close, but I mean, there's some success with as far as advancement and also remediation that instead of going a whole year and students having to come back and retake class with a trimester, they can, if they failed A part A, then they can take part A, second one over again, and then part B. So I mean, it offers more classes, I don't know. It's just, it was just interesting. I'm not saying we're going that route or anything like that, or taking it serious. But just, at some point, just look at it. It's interesting to look at. Yeah, scheduling would be simple.
What kind of FTE numbers we gonna have with that?
So, so we're gonna find that graduation for this year. Is that right?
Yes.
All right, Friday night graduation.
We don't actually vote on it, yeah.
Well, I mean, we'll, yeah, but I mean.
We're gonna recommend.
We've got some suggestions.
All right, Friday night graduation.
Starting this year.
Starting this year. We'll look at the calendar number one there. Now, I'm sorry.
If everybody likes.
We can take action at least Thursday night, right?
That's what I was gonna say, if everybody likes what we're talking about for number one, if y'all wanted to make those changes and send it to us maybe at the beginning of the week.
I will.
And if everybody has time to look at it and think about it, I'll give them a Thursday if y'all are.
I just want to make sure, I've had three options of placement of fall break. Fully in September, across between September and October, or either around Columbus Day.
Columbus Day.
Because there are people that are out here in Columbus.
I like, I like number one. I just, I just math it like it, Martha, the, the fall, spring, and winter break on option number one is the same weeks we did this year. And I think it's pretty good even between time. I kind of believe in what's proposed.
I'm kind of in the way it is, well, with the changes.
Is it, is it, when is Columbus Day?
Should be, should be.
October 12th.
Yeah, the real day's on 12th, but they do it on that day, whatever the lundy is.
Lundy is, okay.
Yeah.
Columbus Day.
Yeah. The real, it's on.
That's fine. If that's what y'all want to do, I don't care. I don't care.
Yeah, I'm okay with the winter.
I'm fine with doing last week in September, or we can do Columbus week.
I'm sure.
Do you have a preference?
I don't.
Is this last week September dead even between fall and?
If I, if I.
You count it right?
Yeah. I don't know, count them up where you can say.
At the end of the nine-week grade period.
It says, it may be off, I don't know.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight weeks before.
Sixteen.
Seven weeks after. I guess it's 15 weeks, so yeah.
It's right at the midway point between starting school and Thanksgiving.
Well, if, if the September week, the September, October week is seven weeks, and that gives the teachers about a week and a half to review material before they have to take nine-week grades.
And we're actually going to semester grading.
Okay.
And instead of do or die nine weeks, if y'all with your levels and stuff. One, I mean, I don't know if it matters, I mean, of course, I'm fine with any of it. We are gonna add, it won't be for the teachers, but the students will have a long Labor Day weekend. Do you want fall break right there, or do you want to push it a tad further because of the long Labor Day weekend? All right, doesn't matter to me at all.
I'm sure. I don't, let's just stay, keep it. It's only one day different.
Yep, okay. All right, I'll get that out to y'all. Is there something else I was gonna tell you?
So we're looking at for 2020, 2021 school year proposing graduation to be on Friday, May 21st. Is that right?
Let me see.
Yeah, which, 21st, yeah.
2021, yes, Friday, May 21st.
That's true.
Well, since we decided Friday night, that's everything, but get some air.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Real quickly, we had a planning grant when I first got here with, or got a planning grant from Emery about site-based. about site-based clinics, school-based clinics, and we, we did the planning grant, and the planning grant really did show the, the need for it greatly. Good Samaritan went through some changes, we have to have a, an organization such as Good Samaritan being the actual people that would go through. They have changed CEOs, they've changed their primary head doctor and everything now, and they're, they're really, really wanting to do this. Our commitment would be facility, and actually to, you know, partner with them. It, it won't be a cost on our part, they will, it'll be their equipment, we just find the facility, and they'll staff it. But what we're looking at the possibility of doing would be creating a clinic based at Hill City Elementary and at PJ. Initially, it will be for the school system family, and it, it would be a, it'd be staffed by a PA or a, a doctor themselves would be there. They, you know, they have a, they'd have a sliding scale as far as billing and everything else, and, and they would do the billing, and they'd take our insurance and, and all this, just like everything else. But there's also that if a child didn't have the insurance and the money and stuff, they still would take. It does not replace our nurses and, or anything at all. Our nurses will continue to do the job they're doing, but our nurses would be the gateway, so that if, you know, somebody, they can test for strep, they can get, you know, they, everything, just like a regular medical clinic. And they've been very successful through several other counties in, in Georgia with this. Withfield County's got several of them going, it's different locations, that just, with the need in healthcare, a lot of parents can't take off to take their children if they got a sore throat, or either don't have the insurance or something, and so this will help get medical services to the kids that need it.
That's great. Well, I don't know what training I was at, I thought it was the training to sue, but obviously it wasn't the training to sue, that this was brought up about, frankly, I just don't remember what training I was at, but they talked about that when you put this into your school, it's also a benefit, a huge benefit for staff, and it cuts down on absenteeism for the staff.
Yes.
Because if they have an earache, they can just use their insurance card and go there real quick and get taken care of, and they're not having, and get a prescription, and they're not having to leave.
Yes.
And then it's really increased attendance of students, because the parents now, and it, from what they told us at this training, where I figured that, that it really helped the emergency range, because we have so many people that use the emergency range as a primary care.
Yes.
This now gives them another place to go.
It does. The other thing along that same lines, whether it's a staff member's child that needs to go to the doctor, instead of having to leave school and get a substitute to send, take them to clinic. The clinics would be available if, if they're able to pull it off, and we're still in the, we're looking towards trying to do that in next school year, in next school year, so we're working strongly with it. And if it, if it does happen, then, you know, I mean, you've got a child going there, and a sibling's sick, mom can run in before taking them to work, I mean, it's just, it does cut down absenteeism, it cuts down a lot of people leaving, and it also makes, people are healthier because they're getting medication and antibiotics before it gets real bad. But that's something down the, that we're looking at, and I'll bring y'all more information as we need it. We have not replaced our Director of Health Services. I want to bring some possible things to you, because this particular person not only would be over all our nurses, it would also be over our partnerships with the school of nursing over here, as far as nursing services and things that they can do in the schools, as far as CPR training for all, I think they're, all of our seventh graders are going through CPR training right now, our staff, and so, I mean, there's a lot of that. And also help oversee this, the relationships with the clinic. And so, we'll, we'll be talking about some possible opportunities there shortly. So I haven't quickly filled that position yet, though I want to have some options there that I'll bring you. I think that's about it. Anything else?
That's everything you had listed?
Tony, is there anything else that we talked about?